This meeting is now called.
Would you all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we're gonna have the minutes to approve. For May 23rd, 2024. I need a motion for that.
I move to approve the minutes as presented tonight for May 23rd.
I have seconded, moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right arm. It's unanimous. Motion passes. Okay, now we're going to declare the budget hearing open for public comment. Is there any comment for the budget? Did you make your request for that comment for the budget meeting? No? Okay, so I have no comment, so apparently there's no complaint, no comments. Alright. So, I need a motion. We're accepting the budget?
Let's deliver.
Okay.
They'll adjourn the budget hearing and then we'll, the board will act on it.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn from this hearing and then we're gonna go into the main business meeting. Sorry about that. Okay.
Also, it says for deliberations right after the, the public hearing.
Okay, for deliberation. So what do you want to deliberate?
I noticed you didn't mention that part.
Well, yeah, but you didn't say anything, so I figured you weren't gonna deliberate anything.
Somebody else does.
Alright, great. Okay, now we're on to the business meeting. Call to order. Alright. Now, I wanna go through to a special recognition of Sheri Reader. And I just want to say that all teachers have dedicated their lives in teaching our students to be successful, to know where they want to go, and they assist them in their future endeavors. And I'm just so proud of every teacher that's out here and all the work that you have done. And I wish I had become a teacher because I'd still be teaching today. Okay. Anyway, I'm gonna get back to Tony and he wants to say some words.
Yeah, I'm really proud of all the teachers in our district and it's a special moment when you have a teacher who exemplifies the entire profession and an entire district. And I think that's a lot of weight for one person to carry on their shoulders, maybe not fair. But I really think that Sheri Reader exemplifies who educators are in our district and she was selected for her excellence in commitment, or commitment to excellence in education by the On Point Community Credit Union as Oregon's Teacher of the Year. It is now, it is no small thing to be selected as Oregon's Teacher of the Year. I have Sheri coming up here and.
Yeah, right over here by the light and you still have to take pictures. Okay. Yeah.
Thanks, Dan. Right here. We would like to get the whole board.
Okay, alright. Come on, board, get up here.
Alright, so a photo or two here and then Sheri, no expectation, but a big smile. You would like a comment, if you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to.
Yeah.
We'll give you another round of applause.
Sure, I mean, this is always.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
What's that? Okay.
Okay, alright, nevermind. We got time.
I mean, you only have this little.
Can we give him bunny ears?
Alright, three, two.
A little bit. Thank you so much for your recognition. I cried when I won this award, so I'm sorry if I cry now because it's just like so full of gratitude and like Mr. Mann said, I am beyond blessed for this award because it's the recognition of everyone who's poured into me in my life, making, I wanted to be a teacher since I was 10 years old because of fantastic teachers that poured into my life. And this is my first district and only district I've ever worked in and I'm so blessed to be in Malala. I've never, ever even thought about wanting to be somewhere else and I love working at the middle school with those staff, but also being able to work in special education with K-12. It's so much fun and being able to be a part of this community with all of these really awesome people. So thank you so much for your recognition of me, but also like celebrating all of our awesome students and our staff and our faculty and all of you guys as community members. It's been really awesome and I really appreciate you guys.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Would you like me to move to the next set of recognition as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, gosh, Sheri, thanks for being here tonight. I've had a chance to, to see Sheri's work, not only in the context of the school, but in her vision for what schools can be. She's donated, given her time to work on strategic planning committees and just couldn't think of a better person to represent the district. Um, there are many educators that make a difference to kids' lives and it is a tradition of the board in the district to honor our retirees. And what a, what a, there's no more noble thing to do than to give your life to kids and to make the world a better place. We have a couple of retirees who are able to be here tonight. And I'm gonna do this recognition of those retirees who are able to be here tonight by having the principal come on up and stand up front here together with the retiree themselves. So I'll have both of them come up and then the principal's gonna have a few things to say about each retiree. I think we'll do some photographs too and if retirees, no expectation, but if you would like to say something, you're welcome to. Okay? First up is Judy Kraxberger and her principal.
Directors, Superintendent Mann, everybody in the audience. If you're from Olino, will you just raise your hands as a visual to show how many people are here? Well, as Dr. Mann just said, it is a life's work, standing here next to me, working with children. But 47 years in the Malala River School District because Judy Kraxberger started out as a student at Rural Dell and Malala Primary. And then came back and went to school and got her Bachelor's of Science in 1985 when gas was just 61 cents a gallon. And by June, finished classroom teaching in a two-room schoolhouse, teaching all subjects, including PE and music. In grades, one through four, at, one through four at Lourdes School in Sio, Oregon. Came back to Malala, started as a substitute teacher at Malala Primary School and then Malala Grade School, Rural Dell Grade School and Clark's Grade School, which made the rounds. In her early years, her summer experiences included a library aide, a line worker, a Weber at Sun Berry Cannery.
Mrs. Tru.
And the arts and crafts director at Camp Adams. She was officially hired August 28th, 1989 at Malala Primary where she taught second grade. But she stayed there for seven years until she moved to her beloved Malino where she has taught kindergarten since 1996. I want you to think of all the little hands that this woman has held. She has devoted 35 years to serving children and families. She is an educator, an advocate, a partner, a mentor, our early child expert, and she is a friend to all of us. She is currently the longest tenured teacher in the Malala River School District. It is so hard to try and find words that capture just how much Judy Kraxberger means to all of us. And so I wrote this little poem to Judy, hoping that she'll understand that it comes from a place that is beyond words. Malino will never be the same. I simply cannot imagine looking into your classroom and not seeing you there with your students. I cannot imagine watching them head to class without you there directing traffic and reminding them to walk. And I really cannot imagine going by the staff room and not being able to enjoy a delicious treat that you had made to share and being able to ask you for little people advice. But I can tell you what I can imagine. You enjoying the morning sunshine as you work in your garden. You traveling to places that you would talk, that you would like to talk about or learn about for so many years. You may be sleeping in once in a while, although that's a little hard to imagine. And I also like to imagine that you'll come back and visit us once in a while. Check in and see how we're doing and give us some of your sage advice. I can only imagine what the school will be like without you. But Judy, I know it'll never be the same. We love you, Judy.
For all your service.
Did you want a picture now?
Yeah.
Let's, let's do, let's do this. Let's, because we've got two retirees here tonight and then we'll have a picture with both retirees and the board. Okay? These moms here tonight too and just special to have a family full of educators here to celebrate her. So fantastic. Our next retiree is Dr. Jose Nasek and Dr. Atherton has a few words to share about him.
So, high schoolers, well, we don't do poems. We rap. So, we have a, no, actually, it's true. We have actually had an epic rap battle. I lost. So I think we can leave that out. When I came into the district last year, one of the first things I started hearing about was this Dr. Z. That was like, oh boy, here we go. You know, because when you start hearing multiple times, multiple names, you're like, what's this gonna be? You know, is this gonna be this guy who's kind of like getting that old curmudgeonly? There's one way to do it, that's my way and you're, you're my 16th principal of, you know, one of those speeches. And he was, he was kind enough to take me out to, to coffee and no offense Superintendent Mann, but it was the real interview where he sat me down and, you know, took me through the Dr. Z questions and really got to know him there and see his passion. As I continued on through the next year, I began to see the character traits, who he is as a human being, as an educator, and the deep impact that he's had, not just on Malala High School, but the district itself. And then, you know, I heard about this thing called Share the Love. I don't know if maybe you guys have seen that somewhere. You know, where really it started with, with you and a coffee can and $56 or so. And, you know, it was just one of these February things that was kind of like, hey, I'm gonna do this and as that's grown out now to its own nonprofit organization, completely student-run with, with adults supporting it, maybe one of the most amazing things I've ever seen in education. And I think that's, that's where, as we talked in front of the staff the other day, when somebody can have such a profound impact on not just an organization rebuilding, but a larger group that's lasting, that you can come back to 10 years later and still see what you brought, the gift that you've given back to not just the students in your classroom with, you know, the advice to new teachers and your colleagues who were experienced, as you are, and veterans. That's been an immeasurable gift and what you've given to me in just a year and a half, I've appreciated that and you will be sorely missed at Malala, but we expect you back as well. Thank you for everything. Thank you, Doctor.
So I do want to take advantage of this moment to bring some clo, well, there's no closure. What I've learned, and I'm gonna refer to Dr. Mann now. When, when, the first time I met you, one of the things that convinced me we were in good hands was your focus on the idea of relationships, relationships. And what I've learned as an educator over these years is whatever success I've had, whatever impact I've had, is the result of relationships. No one does anything, accomplishes anything alone. Whatever I've been able to be a part of that has led to a positive impact on this community is the result of the relationships I've been able to have with my coworkers, my administrators, my students, and the community as a whole. It's, 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 it's a team effort. That's the thing I've really come away with. There is no one person that accomplishes something. It only happens because people see value in something and, you know, come together around that, whatever that idea is, whether it's educational or something bigger like Share the Love, that's what really is what makes something happen and, and makes something have an impact. And so I just feel at the end of my career now, so I, I'm humbled by Ms. Kraxberger. I mean, I have 37 years in education versus 47 years in education. I've spent 33 years of those here in the Malala River School District. I started out at Malino when it was its own school district and loved Malino and, and and then again, the district unified and ended up at the middle school when it kicked off and then I ended up at the high school. And what I'm coming away with is that, I mean, I've spent basically most of my adult life working in this community. And I just feel so blessed that the convergence of events, the, the just serendipitous, you know, opportunities. I mean, we moved, my wife is back here. We moved to Oregon. I didn't even have a job. We loaded up a truck. I'm from Cleveland, Ohio. We drove across country. I had lived in Oregon before. I loved Oregon. I wanted to come back. But, you know, I got a job in Malino in August, right before the school started, the school year started. And then things just, you know, progressed over, over the last 33 years. And I just feel blessed that I ended up in this particular community with the people that I've had the opportunity to work with, the people I've gotten the opportunity to know and share experiences with, the learners I've come to know and love. And it's just, it's hard to put into words, but at this point, I mean, I'm gonna keep working in education. I'm a teacher at Portland State University. I work with beginning teachers and I'll continue to do that and I'll take the lessons I've learned here in Malala to, to inform those educators and hopefully inspire them. But I just feel that the, the, the relationships of time, place, people that happen to come together and be, create this life that I've lived as an educator, I just feel blessed and I want to thank the district for the opportunities here. I want to thank for the support ongoing, the relationships I've been able to build. And I'm still on the Share the Love board. I'll still be working, you know, kind of behind the scenes. But like I say, I'm just grateful. That's, that's my final statement. I'm just so grateful for everyone here in this community. And yeah, so thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we need both of you to come back. Yes, gotta come back here.
The same thing.
Yeah. Oh, Mark.
But I can't call about it.
Oh, oh, wait. Okay, alright.
Alright, three, two, one. Beautiful. Alright, thank you.
We gotta get Mark in too. That's kinda going towards the screen.
My head is, no, it's, you're good.
Congratulations, Judy.
Thank you.
Alright, round of applause.
Wow. Yeah.
Bye-bye. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. So, everybody, okay. So next we have a special recognition of the PAC committee members. And it's Katie Riggs and, she's outside. Oh, she's, Mitch, yeah. You. Yes, you're gonna come on up. Okay. Tonight, it is my pleasure to celebrate the hard work of three remarkable volunteers who played an instrumental role in the successful campaign to pass the middle school replacement bond. Their efforts have not only contributed to the betterment of our community, but have also demonstrated the power of teamwork, perseverance, and commitment. First, the bond, the board wishes to recognize the two co-chairs of the Political Action Committee, Mitch Graff and Katie Riggs, and if you could join me to receive a symbol of our appreciation for your service. And I want you.
I thought we were doing this differently. Okay.
These two are a pair of dynamic leaders who globalize nothing short of an extraordinary effort. From the use of prior attempts in the community, they just started over three years ago. They meticulously planned and executed a multiple tactic strategy to rally our community together, highlighting the critical need to replace the failing middle school building. Their vision combined with relentless guidance of many activities, all of which were necessary, ensured that our message was effective. Because of their efforts, we are now on the path to providing a replacement middle school, which will benefit generations of students to come. As a token of our appreciation for their outstanding leadership, we are honored to present Katie Riggs and Mitch Graff with golden shovel lapel pins. Which look very nice, by the way. These pins symbolize the groundbreaking work you have done and the foundation you have laid for our community's future. Thank you both for your incredible dedication and hard work.
After a holdup. Yeah, stay up here. I need to give.
Next, we would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to Jimmy Lanahan. Your contribution as a critical and consistent volunteer was heroic and dedicated. Day after day, you logged miles canvassing voters.
Yes, already.
Ensuring that our community understood the importance of this bond. Your tireless efforts nearly every day played a pivotal role in reaching our goals. Your commitment and perseverance were truly inspiring, sorry. In recognition of your exceptional dedication, we are proud to present you with a gold shoe lapel pin.
Got on my back.
This pin represents the steps you took and the miles you traveled for the cause. Your hard work has made a significant impact and we are deeply grateful. To all three of our honored volunteers, your passion and commitment have made a lasting difference. You have shown us what can be achieved when we come together with a shared purpose. On behalf of the entire community and the board, thank you for your remarkable efforts and for being such inspiring examples of civic engagement. Let us all give a round of applause for Mitch Graff, Katie Riggs, and Jimmy Lanahan.
And a hug for you. You put up with me and you showed me how to knock through a door. You're so professional. Yeah.
Can I say something really quick? So, in one of our PAC meetings, we did two truths and a lie and one of his truths was he was a Vegas, I wanna say champion, or you were like a runner-up.
Yeah. No, no, top 16.
For, for cribbage. My husband custom makes boards.
Oh, my gosh. The irony is, I told Tonciano I was gonna give him a cribbage board with all the extra time he's gonna have on, on his hands, not fixing the middle school. We'll have the board just step out and take it right here.
Do our thing.
You guys were all a part of it. I'm sure I gotta get in front.
Yeah. Yeah, the tall dudes. Yeah, alright.
Tony, do you want to be in the picture?
No. Yes. Look at you, Sierra, just being proactive.
Is your finger over it?
Oh, yes. She was the host at every PAC meeting.
Absolutely, we gotta have. Get Tony in there too.
Oh. Okay, now that we're all done with the awards, we're gonna go into public comment. Ron Gray, you're next.
I almost forgot what I was gonna talk about. Yeah, yeah. It was very nice. One thing I'd like to talk about, many years ago, they used to talk, the board was talking and everybody in school was talking about how they wanted the, the community to come out and have more, something to say about what was going on in the school district. And all of a sudden, when they started coming out, they wanted to limit them for three minutes to say what they were going to say. And, you know, in three minutes, I can't really get much of a cross. And what I would like to have is they only want to initially give somebody three minutes because I don't even know what you guys are going to talk about. You ought to wait until the end of the meeting and if somebody really wants to finish what their conversation was about, then I'll just keep this audio and video running. So it will be, so it can be recorded and reviewed at future time if the public wants to see it.
We have that.
Well, no, you don't have people being, being able to say anything at the end of the meetings.
Oh, not the end, no.
And, uh, well, that's one thing I would like for them to do. And another thing, uh, you know, they talk about, you know, it was mentioned about how bad, you know, there was a parent's, uh, I guess, problem that the school wasn't doing that great in their testing. Well, you know, I, I have a problem with they saying something like that. I mean, I was very active with my son going to school. And I trusted this school about enough to, when they first started IXL, I went and bought my own, because, well, I just didn't trust them at all. And, uh, and they talk about results, you know? I can give you, uh, you can pass these out.
So, we get to keep this? Okay, yeah, okay.
And I would like to see anybody's parents, including all these women on this board, to tell me how I can improve my son's education. He's still got a couple of years of college. Maybe he can get his, he's gonna get his master's degree in four years. Maybe you can give me insight on how he can get his doctor's degree in four years. I would like to see that, and I would like to see any parents' results of their sons and daughters and see how they did. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, you know, you blame everything, you know, you blame it on the parents, you blame it on no telling about all, but I mean, look at the test scores. That's all you gotta look at. This school's not doing that great. They're not up to standards. Long ways from it. You can get online. You get paid, they get paid, I think the last I looked, was fourteen thousand dollars a student to educate these kids. I mean, if you can't educate a kid with that much money, something's wrong. And then they get other, uh, old stuff from the government and the state to, uh, to fund the school. And, uh, you know, I, uh, I'm very disappointed with the school district, to tell you the truth, very, very disappointed. And I don't know how else to put it. Anybody wanted to bait this over with me? Just, I mean, if you think I'm not telling the truth, anything I say here, if any one of you want to call me a liar, or I'm not telling the truth, I'll take a lie detector test, the only condition, they take one, too, and I get to ask them the questions.
Well, we appreciate you coming tonight.
Well, I know my three minutes are up. If you want to stay around after, after the, the meeting's over, we'll, so we can keep on recording this, so.
Yeah.
We can, uh.
Once I adjourn the meeting, though, we won't be recording.
Well, I know that.
Yeah.
But you ought to let the people that wants to stay and have something to say, because I don't know what you're gonna talk about after I leave this podium here.
Well, we're really not allowed to talk.
Oh, you're allowed to do whatever you want.
Yeah, but. Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna let you go. Yeah, we go home, yeah, and discuss it.
Continue our duties.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
That's all I'm saying, is have it recorded.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alright.
If you're so great, why don't you tell me how I can improve my sense of words? Since the seventh grade, someone got serious.
We thank you.
Thank you. Now, anybody want to consider changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we're gonna move on. Hey, Student Board Representative Report, Madison. Yes, you're up.
Okay. Hello, so, um, it's gonna be quite short. I'm just gonna start off with, today was the last day of the school year for the high school, so we are officially in summertime. So, we had around a hundred and seventy-five graduates this year, which is, which is good. They were all a pretty great class, and everyone's gonna miss them. The leadership class is already getting ready for next year with my operation kerfuffle and our link crew getting, meeting up together and planning stuff for the freshmen. My kerfuffle is our kind, empathetic, recent friends, united for fun learning experiences, and it is our transfer student program that I run. We give tours, and Link Day is our freshman program that, um, the freshman's very first day of school, we'll give them tours, and we'll take them through their classes, teach them the ins and outs of high school. We're combining both of those together to try and create just a fun and more, better learning experience to go throughout the school year. Clubs are getting ready to fundraise over the summer, so they can start off strong with the school year. And all in all, everything ended on a really good note, and we're all excited for the break, but then ready to get back in.
So, where will your fundraising events be listed, so the community knows?
Um, I believe it is just different depending on each club. I know a lot of our clubs go through Facebook.
Okay, so like Malala now and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next up is Consent Agenda, Approval of the May Minutes Personnel Report, yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, raise your right arm. It's unanimous motion passes. Thank you. Uh, recommendations for approval of the Sedeco contract.
Our chief business official, Mr. Campbell, and his, his assistant for a couple more days, I think.
That's our Rick.
Are happy to answer any questions you might have about this. This is a one-year update or amendment to the contract that was approved last year, and I'll let, let them speak to it any further, but it does specify costs and such for the upcoming years. Is there more that you'd want to say, or just make a cell available for questions if you have any?
Just a one-year amendment to the existing four-year contract. So, this is the first year, we'll have three more amendments. There's a price escalation clause in each of the years, which they can increase the price based on the, uh, take-home food CPR. So, this year, that's four point two percent, and they increase the prices four percent.
Okay, any other changes that you've seen from, okay. I need a motion. Yes.
Move that we approve the Sedeco contract presented with this agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Sedeco contract. All those in favor, raise your right arm. It's unanimous motion passes. Appropriations Resolution. We've got lots of them. Okay, Approval of the General Fund Contingency, we need to read all of these, don't we?
If it's okay with you, you asked Tarien to split these off, and so she's got.
Okay, I'm gonna have Terry read off the first couple of short ones, and then you're gonna get that real long one.
Because I have trouble reading.
There's a couple of really long ones, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna get you the short one. How about this first one? The Approved General Fund Contingency Appropriation Transfer Resolution, 2023, do you see it?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and read that.
Can I say that full title again?
Well, before she reads it, do we need to make a motion? Or do we read it first, then make the motion, or make the motion, and then read it?
I thought you read it first, and then we voted in, or what? You have to read it, then we make the motion, yeah. Yeah. You get the honors.
This is Approval General Fund Contingency Appropriation Transfer Resolution Number Twenty-three, or Two Thousand Twenty-three to Two Thousand Twenty-four, zero point one, point zero one zero. The general fund adopted budget included an appropriation for operating contingency in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The unexpected cost increase in athletic teams funding, fundraising requires an increase in the funds, fund transfers expense in the general fund to allow for the athletic fund instruction appropriations to be increased. Be it resolved that a transfer of twenty-five thousand appropriated as contingency in the general fund to be transferred to the fund transfers appropriation in the general fund, and twenty-five thousand be appropriated in the, as instruction in the athletic fund.
Yeah.
Chair, I need to be approved the resolution as well.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right arm. And it's unanimous motion passes. Next one. Okay, it's Approval of the General Fund Contingency Appropriation Transfer. Who wants to read that one? You want to read that one? Oh, boy.
She's got a little short, huh?
Yeah.
Approved General Fund Contingency Appropriation Transfer Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-four, Zero Point Zero Zero Nine. The general fund adopted budget included an appropriation for operating contingency in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. The board by resolution has previously transferred twenty-five thousand of this appropriation to fund transfers. The operations portion of MHS Athletics Fund incurred a deficit balance of approximately twenty thousand through June thirty of two thousand twenty-three. This requires a transfer to MHS Athletics Fund greater than the amount of the Two Thousand Twenty-three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-four budget. There could be additional unanticipated expenditures that require transfer of funds from the general fund to the MHS Athletic Fund that exceeds the budgeted amount for Two Thousand Twenty-three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-four. It resolves that a transfer of forty-five thousand appropriated as contingency in the general fund to be transferred to the fund transfers, yeah, transfers appropriation in the general fund.
Chair, I move that we approve the resolution as well.
Okay. Then moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right arm. Okay, it's motion passes, it's unanimous. Next, Resolution is Resolution Transfer Appropriations Twenty-three Twenty-four Point Six Point One Three Point Two Four. Yes.
Resolution Twenty-three Twenty-three Dash Twenty-Twenty-Four Point Oh One Two, Increase Appropriations for Unanticipated Expenditures. Whereas the original budget resolution setting appropriations gives the school board authority to spend money and incur obligations in the coming year, the schedule of appropriation sets the limits on amounts of money that can be spent on each classification within each fund. Whereas all expenditures that are known or anticipated at the time the budget is developed are included in the budget appropriations. However, some amounts are unknown and must be estimated. Whereas OAR One Five Oh Dash Two Nine Four Dot Four Six Three Parent Two does allow a board to transfer appropriations within a fund, provided it must state the need for the transfer, the purpose for the authorized expenditure, and the amount transferred. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Malala River School District authorizes a transfer of appropriations within the following funds. Fund Two Fifty-One, Need and Purpose of Transfer. The costs of elementary teachers transferred from the general fund requires additional appropriations. From Two Thousand Support Services, fifty thousand dollars, to One Thousand Instruction, fifty thousand dollars. Fund Two Fifty-Two, Need and Purpose of Transfer. A combination of consumable supplies and non-consumable supplies had unexpected increases in costs. From Two Thousand Support Services, fifty thousand dollars, to One Thousand Instruction, fifty thousand dollars. Fund Two Eighty-Seven, Need and Purpose of Transfer. Grants received require different expenditures. The Oregon Institute of Technology, for instance, OIT, close parents, expenses were tracked using Function Three Thousand and were not known at the time the budget was adopted. From Two Thousand Support Services, ten thousand dollars, to Three Thousand Community Services, ten thousand dollars. Fund Two Eighty-Nine, Need and Purpose of Transfer. Transportation costs greater than budgeted. From Four Thousand Facilities, fifteen thousand dollars, to Two Thousand Support Service, fifteen thousand dollars. Fund Four Zero One, Need and Purpose of Transfer. Pre-bond expenditures exceeded budgeted amounts. From Four Thousand Facilities, fifty thousand dollars, to Two Thousand Support Services, fifty thousand dollars.
That we approve the resolution as Craig just read. Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right arm. Okay, motion passes. Yes, I'm ready.
Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-four Point Zero One Three, Increase Appropriations for Unanticipated Revenue. Whereas the original budget resolution setting appropriations gives the school board authority to spend money and incur obligations in the coming year, the schedule of appropriations set the limits on amounts of money that can be spent on each classification within each fund. Whereas all revenues that are known or anticipated at the time of the budget or is developed are included in the budget appropriations. However, some amounts are unknown and must be estimated. Whereas the local budget law, ORS Two Nine Four Point Three Three Eight, Grant Two, does allow a board to increase appropriations specifically for expenditures received for unknown and unanticipated grants, gifts, requests, or other devices for a special, specific or special purpose transfer to a municipal corporation. Whereas Malala River School District has received the early literacy grant accounted for in state-funded grants. Therefore, it is, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Malala River School District authorized appropriations within the state-funded grants for unanticipated revenues totaling seventy thousand for Two Thousand Twenty-three to Two Thousand Twenty-four as follows. As adopted, Two Thousand Support Services, Fifty-Two Thousand Eight Hundred Fifty-Six, has increased by this resolution, Two Thousand Support Services, One Hundred Twenty-Two Thousand Eight Hundred And Fifty-Six.
Yes.
Approve the resolution. Twenty-three Twenty-four Dash Zero One Three, as read.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right arm. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Resolution for Unforeseen. We, this is the last one, right, on this one? Okay. One more? Okay, yeah. Go ahead and, who's reading that? Did you want to read that, Ron?
Terry's gonna read that.
Okay, alright. Okay, go ahead.
Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-four Point Zero One Four, Increase Appropriations for Unforeseen Occurrence. Whereas the original budget resolution setting appropriations gives the school board authority to spend money and incur obligations in the coming year, the schedule of appropriations sets the limits on amounts of money that can be spent on each classification within each fund. Whereas all, all resources and expenditures that are known or anticipated at the time of the budget is developed are included in the budget. However, some amounts are unknown and must be estimated. Whereas ORS Two Nine Four Dash Three Three Eight, Parent Three, does allow a governing board to declare an unforeseen, unforeseen occurrence, and whereas the Two Thousand Twenty-three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-four budget for the student investment account in the amount of, what is that? Thank you. Hold on, two million ninety-six thousand eight hundred fifty-five, did I get that right? Awesome, that's a big number. It was established using the most current information for the Oregon Department of Education, and whereas the Oregon Department of Education issued a sub-grant award notification, original dated November ninth, two thousand twenty-three, for the Two Thousand Twenty-three Dash Two Thousand Twenty-five Student Investment Account, Year One, in the amount of, thank you, two million four hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and forty-six point twenty-eight. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Malala River School District declare that an unforeseen occurrence and authorizes an increase in the appropriations within the student investment account for this unanticipated increase is available, resources, unavailable resources as follows. One thousand instruction, three hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-one point twenty-eight.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right arm. And it's unanimous, motion passes. Next. Is the resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash twenty-two forty-four point zero one-one. I think I'm gonna have you read this.
If that's okay, this is the budget, right? So this is the fun one.
Just be the one, yes, you're the you're really good at this, so that's why I always hand it to you.
Resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash twenty-two forty-four point zero one-one. Adopting the budget, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing the tax for the twenty-two forty-four slash twenty-two twenty-five fiscal year. Adopting the budget. Be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Malala River School District Number Thirty-five hereby adopts the budget for fiscal year to pardon me, twenty-two forty-four dash twenty-two twenty-five in a total of sixty million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Making appropriations, be it further resolved that the amounts for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-two forty-four and for the purposes shown below are hereby appropriated. Should I just go down the left column first and the right column next? That's okay. General Fund, one thousand instruction, eighteen million five hundred and five thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. Two thousand support services, fifteen million six hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Fifty-two hundred transfers, two million twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Sixty-one-ten contingency, two hundred and fifty thousand total, general fund thirty-six million four hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars. Federal Grants Fund, one thousand instruction, eight hundred and ten thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Two thousand support services, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand and eighteen dollars. Three thousand community services, eight thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Total Federal Grants Fund, one million six hundred and five thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Student Investment Act, one thousand instruction, two million seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Two thousand support services, four hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Total, two million four hundred and forty thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars. High School Success Parent M ninety-eights. One thousand instruction, three hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Two thousand support services, three hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Three thousand community services, forty-two thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Total, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Miscellaneous state-funded grants, one thousand instruction, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, no, yes, sorry. Three hundred and thirty-seven thousand and sixty dollars. Two thousand support services, three hundred and ninety-five thousand and forty dollars. Total, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars. E-rate, two thousand support services, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Total, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. MHS Athletics, one thousand instruction, eight hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Two thousand support services, fifty-five thousand dollars. Total, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. MHS Land Lab, one thousand instruction, three hundred and twenty thousand, uh, two hundred and ninety dollars. Two thousand support services, seventy-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Total, three hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Public Purpose Energy, four thousand facilities acquisition and construction. Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Total, two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Food Service Fund, three thousand. Enterprise, one million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Total, one million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. General Obligation Bonds, fifty-one hundred debt service, three million six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Total, three million six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Pension Obligation Bonds, fifty-one hundred debt service, two million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Sixty-one-ten contingency, five hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. Total three million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Capital Reserve, two thousand support services, ninety-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Four thousand facilities acquisition and construction, one million six hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred dollars. Total, one million seven hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Student Activities Fund, one thousand instruction, four hundred thousand dollars. Total, four hundred thousand dollars. Miscellaneous Community Grants, one thousand instruction, seventy-three thousand dollars. Two thousand support services, four hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. Three thousand community services, two thousand dollars. Total, four hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. Capital Construction, right? Yeah, capital construction, two thousand support services, twenty-five thousand dollars. Four thousand facilities acquisition and construction, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Risk Management, two thousand support services, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Total, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Scholarship Trust Fund, three thousand community services, one hundred thousand dollars. Total, one hundred thousand dollars. Total appropriations, all funds, fifty-five million four hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and seven dollars. Keep reading, right?
Yeah, general.
Go back over to the left-hand side.
General Fund. What's long? My eyes are glazing.
Feel like I'm reading the same thing all over again. All right, uh, General Fund, one thousand instruction, eighteen million five hundred and five thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. Two thousand support services, fifteen million six hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Yeah, yeah, okay, so I can stop reading now?
So all you need to do now is imposing the tax.
Okay.
And categorizing the tax.
So now I need to go down to imposing the tax?
Yes.
Okay, shall I resume? Thank you, you are a gem. Imposing the tax, be it further be it further resolved that the Board of Directors of Malala River School District Number Thirty-five hereby imposes the taxes provided for in the approved budget in the amount of the permanent rate of four point seven zero zero one dollars for one thousand dollars of assessed value for operations. Two, in the amount of three million eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for bonds. And that these taxes are hereby imposed and categorized for tax year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five upon the assessed value of all taxable taxable property within the district as follows. Categorizing the tax. Education limitation, general fund four point seven zero zero one per one thousand dollars. Excluded from the limitation, nothing. Debt Service Fund, education limitation, none, excluded from a limitation, three million eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The above resolution statements were approved and declared adopted on this thirteenth day of June twenty twenty-four, provided that.
Thank you so much for all your efforts. Okay, all those in favor of adopting this resolution as read by Craig, raise your right arm. Oh, oh, excuse me, yes, make the motion and do it.
How are we say that? What is it called? Adopt approving the adopting of the budget.
Yeah. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right arm. Okay, now it's unanimous, motion passes. Didn't think we'd ever get this done. All right, so now we're into information discussion. Communication report from Tony Mann and Andrea Watson. Is Andrea here?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna take this one tonight. Thank you, Chair Esprit and Directors. Lots of details and important work. Thank you for the work you did to get tonight, which included lots of budget meetings and lots of attention to detail. Uh, let's see here, yes, Director Watson, who you've come to know over the last five, six months has been everywhere. It's almost like she's duplicated herself. She's all right place, all right time. Tonight, I said to her that her niece's graduation from Portland State University was mort, so she's taking care of family business tonight. She's been at all of our board meetings to date, though, and I really wanted to just take a minute to appreciate her, even though she's not here and remind ourselves, the board, anyone in the public that might be watching the ground that has been covered uh, since she arrived in the district in February. She's reported each month on these milestone activities related to bond-related communications. And I'm not gonna speak to them, but the volume is is notable. And she delivered on each of the commitments that she made, and I think that that communication is part of the hallmark of what we wanna do. This passage of this bond is just really the beginning. This is a long game of continuing to communicate transparently and 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 clearly with our public. And Andrea set a real good mark. The two things that I do wanna highlight tonight are what's happening here in June. So at the very top of her report, you see there are a number of key activities in process in the table above. And it's the bullet list below that I wanna just highlight a few things here that will update you both on communications and work that's happened to prepare for bond activity since its passage. So you'll see the very first bullet, there is Bond Project Huddles every every morning together with Mr. Campbell in Finance, myself, Andrea Watson in Communications, Lori's with us. Tony Keano in Facilities and Andrea, did I miss anybody? So we've met every morning just to make sure we're checking the right boxes and taking the steps that need to move this work of operationalizing the bond's passage early. We don't wanna miss a beat in moving because we wanna deliver on the promise of on time and as under budget, uh, because that's the the commitment that we make. The first thing that we have done here in the last couple of weeks is we've begun to finalize a request for proposals that will put out to the public to seek a project manager to represent the district in operationalizing the the planning process and the design process for our new middle school. That is the first step, and we do that in combination with our attorney. So I've been working with this team each morning, and our daily huddle is keeping them apprised and checking the right boxes with that work while Mr. Campbell on another field has been working to prepare for the bond sales with our bond attorney at Hawkins-Della Field and our firm Piper Sandler. And if you have any questions about the bond sales, he could respond to any of that. So that's work that we've been planning and prepping to do in the background. We know this election is not finalized until it's finalized, but we didn't wanna wait uh, until that final official document and be behind the curve. So I appreciate Andy's work on that. We also, as you know, tonight, we wanted to make sure we, with the board's help, took time to recognize leaders, as you did earlier, by pinning. I love the shoes. I love the shoes on the on the on the shovels. We also have thank you notes going out to partners. We have a celebration event that Andrea is working on, planning that will take place on August seventh in the evening here. It'll be open to the public. Anyone wants to attend, but we'll make sure that there are personal invitations that go out to all of the people who were active in supporting the board in your bond effort. The next bullet down there that I really want to highlight here, because we wanna make sure we communicate carefully with your public, is we have been notified by the Department of Education that we will, in fact, receive the awesome grant matching fund dollars. So that that is, yeah, definitely something to celebrate. You know, that does happen because those who were above us on the list, in the priority list with the state were districts that did not pass their bond. S K is one that was above us. There are other districts that were above us. They did not pass their their bond in their election. And so we were at the bottom and we moved up, and we got that official notification. I think it'll be important for our public to know that we were not expecting those dollars. And our bond oversight committee, which I'll speak about here in a little bit, it's gonna be one of their first early tasks is to talk about those dollars and what is the priority for those dollars. Because the budget to build the new middle school for the seventy-seven point four-six million dollars did not include this revenue. So this is additional revenue that can be used towards the middle school in ways yet to be determined by that bond oversight committee with approval by the board. Again, uh, some of that could go to contingency. Early on, some of that could go to pay down the loan early. Some of that could be to go to a list of of priorities that the C-Bac Committee removed from their design list originally to keep the price down. So there are a lot of different options for those six million dollars, and we want the public to know that we're gonna be just as transparent with those decisions as we have been to date. And we'll have a publicity, well, some some communications, uh, public communications going out from Andrea's office on that shortly. We've also begun having conversations to make sure that local contractors, local suppliers are aware that this has passed and they'll be able to be included in any kind of request for proposals. There's no those details on who's doing the work are yet to be worked out. We want, we want our local people, though, to know that they're welcome to be included in that entire process of submitting bids and Andrea attended the chamber meeting this morning and is scheduled to give a Chamber of Commerce report out later this month to the Chamber of Commerce members on the twentieth. So I'm really appreciative of her her leadership. We're starting a timeline across the, which is just beginning, that's gonna map out the road of all the tasks that are completed to move this forward. So she thought it'd be nice to have a good visual in here for the public and anyone to see this is what we did, this is what we were doing then, and this is what came next and next. So we'll have a digital version on our website, too, but just have that visual meeting or that visual in your in your boardroom. We thought that would be a fun addition. So without further ado, uh, that's that's the priority. Those are the priorities in her report. I think the next agenda item is also hers on my writer, it's still the same agenda item on the bond oversight committee. Okay. Okay, so I'll wait till we get to that. If there are any questions on the communications that have taken place to date and some of the early planning, I'm glad they've responded to any. I know I verbally downplayed quite a bit there, but.
We're having a celebration event, June twenty-sixth. Are we putting that on the reader boards where everybody can see that, also on our district website?
It was originally a June twenty-sixth date. It has been formally set for August seventh. Andrea's worked with Mitch and the Pullback Committee to put together an invitation that will be pushed out to the whole community on that as well. And that will be sponsored by the PAC. It'll be a barbecue.
We should be recognizing all the other members who helped out with bond, like Luke's family. Be on that great dinner.
So with the pleasure, I'll move to the next item, which is also Andrea's on the Bond Oversight Committee. If a one-pager in your packet that is a draft at this time that's similar to the process we use to recruit volunteers to be on the citizens' bond advisory originally two and a half years ago, gosh, was that two and a half years ago, two years ago? And we wanna make sure that we have diverse representation there. We believe that folks in our community have expertise that will help us make sure that we're communicating to the public that we're using the bond dollars the way that they were intended to be used and the way that voters voted. So up to twenty volunteers will be recruited. And you see that document there again as a draft. We really wanted to make sure it was wide open, so we asked uh, we will be asking applicants to identify their relationship with the district. And that could be, you know, they don't necessarily have to have students in the district. Maybe it's a grandparent, maybe it's an alumni. and that could be, you know, they don't necessarily have to have students in the district. Maybe it's a grandparent. Maybe it's an alumni who lives in the area, maybe not in the district, but they're an alumni with deep roots in the community and grandchildren in the community. So we've opened this up, and we'll bring in those applicants over the coming weeks. I intend to bring those names to the board at your July 18th. Is that July 18th, business meeting? My apologies. So then the due date on the application will be the 18th, and bring the roster to the board on the 25th at your work session in July. And this is in line with the timelines that successful districts have had in getting these processes off the ground. So. Yes, Director Neil.
I think it's good that you're bringing this to everybody's attention and really showing exactly what the criteria is. I know there's been some talk in the community about oversight committees and how they're untrustworthy, and I just think that just focusing on the fact that this is going to be taxpayers, you know, local parents, grandparents, business owners, and all coming together for a good cause and making sure that every single dollar is going to be spent the way it should be. I really appreciate you guys having this. I don't think we have it any other way.
So nothing else there, Tony, here?
Nothing else there unless there are questions.
Nick, are there any questions or remarks? Okay, we're done there. How about facilities and deferred maintenance? Tony Ciano?
Matt, Chair, how's the board? Hey, hello. As requested by the board at the last meeting, we talked about doing a long-range overlook. This is more like a six- to 10-year roofing plan for the district. This is something that I put together with the Garland Company, who helps with our procurement progress during our big roofing projects with the help of Mr. Van and the Garland Company, myself, Shalen. This is kind of a pretty good detailed current pricing for roof replacements around the district. As you look, we left off the middle school. World does been complete, so that's pretty much a 30-year roof. A lot of that roofing that's been taking place the last six or seven years, we're down to 25 years, so I didn't think it was absolutely on this spreadsheet. So yeah, big ticket items, some of the stuff, again, like the high school, we have different styles of roof, comp roof, flat metal roof, standing seam roof. So the prices could change, you know, increased as as time goes on, but I feel like this is a pretty good roadmap, you know, working with Tony and myself. Gives you a pretty good idea of full replacements of what is coming down the road.
His work preparing this report tonight is it connects back with some conversations the board has had in recent months, in particular Director Mark Luke asking for us to bring to the board not just a look back at what's been happening the last month, but a reporting of projecting out in one, three, five-year increments the maintenance and repair and replacement costs that Tony's projecting. I know that Tony has always done this work and mapped it out on a year-by-year basis, and I really appreciate, you know, him letting me push him a little bit. Let's map this out over a five-year period so that we're, you know, looking as far down the road as we can. Keep in mind, all these cost estimates are random, not random, but raw order of magnitude estimates using $20.24. We don't know what the cost increases might be, but today you see what the cost of these repairs and replacements would look like. Historically, we've budgeted for major repairs and replacements like this by thoughtfully, you know, socking away some money and holding it for a year or two until we get enough in a dedicated amount for capital improvements to dive into big projects. There are some that we're able to get into year by year, and Tony has always worked carefully with the business director to, you know, manage the resources to make sure we're ahead of the curve. I really, at this moment in time, feel like we've got a clear pathway over the next six to eight years on roofing, what it's going to look like, and Tony's doing the same work for each other system in the district. So he's developing a one, three, five, 10-year plan for HVAC, for siding, for carpet, so that when he's building his budget and the board's looking at the, you know, the resources we have in any given year, we might want to accomplish more in facilities. What are we going to, you know, what are we going to have to pull back from in other places to do that? Or we might have to pull back from facilities to attend to, you know, program or class size. So we've got limited resources, and this just gives us a good look into the future based on wear and tear, what Tony's seeing is going to be the most urgent priorities and then the long-term priorities.
Yeah, I think working with Rick and Andy here in the future that, you know, some of the dollars we spend at the beginning of the year, again, like Tony says, we pulled off because we don't know what kind of state money we're going to get where we can actually put more money into those schools. So sometimes it's working with the state, correct, is lagged a little behind. So, you know, we just don't throw our eggs in one basket at the beginning of the year to make sure that, you know, we have enough to do more projects toward the end of the year, like replacing the rest of this spring. It's a $100,000 project. So that's just one of those things we kind of have out. So.
It'd be nice. We have some kind of a slope to those roofs so that we wouldn't have water, you know, sitting in.
You know, we implemented that at Malino. When we did the hallway at Malino, it was, it was, there was a section that was so completely flat that it held two, three inches of water.
Yeah.
So once we ripped that off, we sloped it, the drains had to actually make that rough.
That would be nice.
Drainable. So, yeah, it's the thought process going ahead.
Any other question? Yeah, okay. Does anybody have a question that they want to ask? Yeah. I love all this information that you're providing here. Very good.
Do like to say one more thing. We do have a retiree that is not here today. His name is Rod Alet. He was our Browns Crew Lead, Browns Crew Guy. He had been with the district for 23 years. He started, went to school in Malino when it was K through 12. I'm sorry, K through eight, then he went to the high school. Graduated here. He's a, he's a local. He lives right here in town. I just have to say, I've never seen somebody that has so much pride at Malala, in his grounds, in his football field, soccer field, Malala Elementary, the middle school. And when you think about the mowing, the weed eating, and the effort that he had put in for 23 years is impeccable. He bleeds orange and black. He told me, I don't know how many times when I first started here, he said, Tony, this is my town. This is, this is mine. So that just tells me how much pride he had, and he's going to be sorely, sorely missed. I'm going to miss him tremendously, and I just hope the board and everybody understands the appreciation of what effort he put forward last 20 years.
Do we have something for him, too?
We did. We.
Yeah.
Same recognition, just those who were here tonight. We wanted to make sure that each principal or supervisor spoke to them. Since Tony had the floor, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, we got him this gift this morning and planned a little retirement party for him out at the shop, you know, at the end of the month, so.
Is he the one that is on the football field, like really early in the morning?
He gets out there and he pulls the reels out with his truck, making sure whatever can't get covered, he covers with his water reels, you know, JV softball, and so, yeah, the pride he has is impeccable.
And he's there early, because sometimes I'll go walk and he's already there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's, so he's sorely missed.
Yes, he will. So thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, business matters. Financial report. You guys are up.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Dr. Mann covered most of my talking points on the bond. So thank you for that. I will add, I think it's worth noting that the bond issuance team and the bond council are leaders in the industry. So they've helped numerous school districts navigate the complexities of bond issues. So we are in good hands with their team and their schedule. Right now, we're well underway of issuing the bonds. We've got a lot of work to do. I think we're scheduled to issue the beginning of September. So we'll keep you up to date on that. You're going to have, next week, you'll have a resolution in front of the authorizing the sale of the bonds as soon as we get the confirmation from the county, the certification of the election. Are there any questions on the finance update or SEDEXO contract or the state school fund adjustment that you have on your agenda?
Doesn't look like it.
Any questions on the bond?
Any questions? I think we're good. Yeah.
Thank you.
Next, teaching and learning report, curriculum and instructional assessment.
Well, school is out, and what a year it's been. I want to just take a moment to acknowledge all of the the hard work of our teachers, our entire staff, and everything that goes into making a wonderful school year, and especially our students and our families. But just because it's summer doesn't mean that learning has stopped. Malala River will offer several summer programs this year, as I mentioned last week, last month. So we have one of our programs starting on Monday. So our migrant program that will be at MES will go for two weeks. We have about 17 students registered. And then after our, after that program, excuse me, allergies, we have the elementary program as well as the middle school program that will start after the Fourth of July. So all of those programs, just a big shout out to all the site leads and the teachers and instructional assistants, and everybody coming together takes a lot of planning, including the bus service and meal service, et cetera. So what questions do you have for me?
I would love to see summer school on a regular basis every year.
Well, I think history, we've had, we've had that for quite a while, and I know that a lot of families really appreciate the opportunity for our students for that extended learning with academic and also enrichment pieces. So next month, I hope to share with you some specifics about what's going on.
Anybody else have anything they want to say? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Student Services, is Robin here?
Okay. We included her report as it has data regarding outside placements that I know the board wanted to see included in her report. So those data are in the report tonight, and if you do have questions that I can't answer, I'd be glad to make sure she has them, comes back next month or provides them in writing.
Anybody have any questions? Nope, seeing them, we're moving on. Superintendent's report.
Chair, I think, and Directors, right time of transitions, I just want to shout out again to all the children and kids. They're not all children. You know, some of them are adults, right? Our seniors just graduated last week, and it was a great graduation. I know that our eighth grade promotion ceremony took place on Wednesday evening, and today our elementary schools, I believe, there were fifth grade promotion activities, and that moment of transition is really important. The quality of the transition, there's a lot of research that says the quality of the transition and the quality of the kids start in that next location are great predictors around how things play out for them long term. And I know that our principals are keenly paying attention to how do we bring onboard our kindergarteners, our new sixth graders, and our new freshmen, and effectively a summer program is part of that student investment account dollars. Legislative decision to have those dollars in place is what has allowed us to do that summer programming the last several years. And we're already planning, obviously you hear it in the reports, we're planning for next year, and we're excited for a little bit of a break for our teachers, everybody getting a chance to breathe, too. So summertime's around the corner, and hopefully everybody stays safe. Thanks to the board for your support.
Board comments. Want to go down the line? Oh, you had a question? Yeah.
No, it was a question. I was just going to comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Go first. Rob?
Just want to extend my congratulations, too, to all of the retiring teachers. I think that's great. I love the fact that we have a lot of people that have been in this community for a lot of years and that continue and take pride in our school. I know myself being one of those, I've been in this community now for 47 years and grew up in this school, and so I really appreciate all those years and time, and not just the people that retired, but also the people out here that are continuing to work with our school and work with our students, whether it be in finance, whether it be in facilities, or whether it be teachers, principals. You guys are all very, very much appreciated, and I thank you for your work and dedication to the school district.
You're here.
You're here, man. Absolutely.
However, I would like to add one thing. While the meeting was going on, I just had to go back and do a little research, and I'm on the website of the Clackamas County Elections Office right now, and it says Malala River Measure 3-45 bond for additional school and other improvements. This was in 1998. 26% of the voters who cast a ballot voted in favor. It was more than 59% who voted against, and surprisingly, a very large number just didn't bother to vote on it at all, 14%. So, yeah, and so that's how long it's been, almost 26 years. We're a few months shy of 26 years since the first time they started trying to pass the measure for the middle school. And this is not, I show, I know Neil remembers this, not the second or the third iteration of this vote. It's been way beyond that. I don't, I can't even remember how many it's been since then.
That's amazing.
But I just want to say, and I'll be honest, I was one of the 59% that year. I'm just going to throw that out there. For a whole bunch of reasons, a lot of it having to do with the fact that it wasn't just the middle school. It was millions of dollars of other stuff.
Yeah.
Completely unrelated to the middle school that we felt like, my family felt like it wasn't necessary. So anyway, I want to say kudos to all the, for you, for everybody, for all the hard work they did on the bond measure, and I voted for it this year, just like I did the last time and the time before that. So I'm with you on that. Anyway, thank you.
Very. Well, I'll say thank you to all the teachers. I think it's amazing, 47 years in one place, 23 years, 27 years. I don't know if I've lived in a town that long, so I think that's kind of amazing. Do you have one question about graduation for our seniors this year? You said 174 students, 175 graduated?
Yes.
How many seniors did we have?
On graduation?
No, not on graduation, but how many seniors enrolled and how many did not graduate?
Yeah.
Indirect ways of my intention is to not answer. It's not that I don't want to answer you directly, but the definition of a senior that is counted towards a school's graduation rate
Yeah.
isn't just, aren't just those seniors that are enrolled that year.
Right.
It's kids, you know, there's four-year cohort analysis, for example. I know that our high school this year, Dr. Atherton, was sharing the attrition data around the number of students, the percentage of students that moved in and out of our school district, or not our school district, but our high school this year. I think they were close, if I remember his number correctly, close to 1,100 students that had moved, that had set foot into our high school as a student this year. Now, we're a school of about 730. That means that any moment in time, there were 250 kids coming or going. Is that about, I should have looked at, you know, turned to you, Dr. Atherton, is that right? About 1,100 kids?
1,075. In an hour, and some stayed all year, but lots of movement.
So how many of those were seniors coming and going? I'm not sure.
So it's kind of curious. I want to make sure, I mean, we hear it all the time that our graduation levels are up, so it's like, how do we equate that? Like, I really.
The official graduation data analyzing the four-year cohort as it's defined in the state will be worked on over the next three, four months, finalized and be fully baked and public, I think, in November. It takes that six-month window to validate all the data, but Dr. Atherton, if you want to speak to your estimate on on-time graduation.
Then what? Yeah.
Yeah, we're, so I think we actually had 154 across the stage. And we were approximately 164. Um, and we were approximately a hundred and sixty four seniors. So some of that is fifth year, some of that, you know.
Yeah.
So there's some interesting things. And that also includes, uh, I think he had five O L license in there as well. Um, so that continues to provide graduation opportunities for students uh, who probably otherwise would. So overall, the, the senior class over the course of the year had a twenty seven percent mobility rate. Uh, so that's, you know, over the course of the class. Involved with three over the course of the year. So. And that's not, that's not necessarily all dropout. That could be just they lived here for a while and then moved or moved again.
Neil's got a heartbreak at the beginning of eight thirty. Is there anything you'd like to say before you have to go?
I think he did it.
Did over everything. Would you like to say something? No, it's okay, Amy.
I would like to recognize Lori. And, yes, and her volley, her boys volleyball team.
Yes.
She was recognized as coach of the year by May forty for that division, right?
That's awesome. That is awesome.
Thank you. The boys finished fifth overall and uh, I think there were seventeen teams overall, but boys volleyball went from thirty one teams last year to fifty two this year with seventy five schools participating. So we went from four hundred kids last year to almost nine hundred. I think it was eight seventy was the last number. Yeah, it's grown very, very quickly and it's becoming very popular, which is good. And the boys finished fifth and we had four boys get uh, all state.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I have to say that I really enjoyed graduation this year and got to pass out all the diplomas with the help of Tony Mann. And uh, we did really, really well. I mean, and then you got all those little rubber duckies. I could not believe how many of the students were just so delighted to give you little ducks that would squeak and squawk and, I mean, it was just a blast. I just, I loved it. It was more fun than I've ever had during a graduation. I mean, those students are just fantastic. I just never had so much fun in my life, you guys. So anyway, I don't want to do that again sometime real soon. Absolutely. Neil, you're, you're okay. You're not, okay? All right, onward. I'm reminiscing to it. Upcoming meetings, June twentieth, special meeting at the district office at seven. June twenty fifth, policy meeting at the district office at five thirty. June twenty seventh, work session at the district office at seven. Now I need a motion.
I'm motion.
Okay, second, okay. All those in paper, say aye. Raise your aye.
Okay, good. It's unanimous. We're gone. Bye bye, guys. Thank you for coming.
Oh, yeah. What do you want? Oh, I'm raising my. Oh, I tried.
Well, that was a good one. That was a good meeting.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I loved it.
And we finished it.